Are you here? Okay.
I'm here.
All right.
Hey, hold on, we're just gonna get on Facebook. Hold Dana.
Okay, can I call the meeting to order?
Just a minute.
It's tonight of all nights, this has to work. There we go, okay.
All right.
And then go back to Zoom so we can see.
Okay, unless there's any objection from anybody in the room, in the conference room, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the July 20th, 2020, meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights Library Board of Trustees. Would the fiscal officer call the roll, please?
Ms. Carlyle? Ms. Crenshaw?
Present.
Ms. Foellin? Mr. Burbach?
Here.
Ms. Iwamato?
Here.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Trappia?
Here.
Are we good to go?
Okay.
Uh, I just certified that the notification of this meeting of the Board of Library Trustees has been made. First order of business before comment from the public is approval of the minutes from the July 1st, or June 1st and June 15th meeting. Any corrections or adjustments anyone saw? If not, can I have a motion and second?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All those who favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those say aye, motion's approved.
Okay. We have some visitors today, I can't tell because I'm looking around my Zoom screen. Is there someone here from the Staff Association on the call?
No, no.
Okay, do we have a representative from the Friends of the Heights Libraries?
No, they submitted a report.
Okay, they submitted a report, good. Any, anybody from the Foundation present on the call?
No.
Okay, and do we have a League of Women Voters reporter here on the call?
Usually she looks at it the next day to write it up for the observer.
Okay, great. For those who've gotten onto this call to give public comments, we welcome comments from, from the community at every meeting. And please note, if you're going to speak, that this is tape recorded, your statement is part of the public record. And we ask that you limit your remarks to no more than five minutes, and that you include your name and address when you introduce yourself. The agenda for the meeting is set in advance, so we don't engage in conversation about public comments. We cover them and discuss them as a board the next time that we get together. That's how we handle public comments and always have. We obviously give careful consideration to the concerns of anybody who decides to speak, and we will respond to everyone. Now, that being said, do we have anybody participating in this call who'd like to give their five minutes of speaking on any issue?
Cheryl's gonna control letting people in and out to speak here.
Okay.
I would.
It looks like somebody I'm in.
Can whoever likes, who are speaking, please identify themselves and where they live?
Richard Ferris.
Right.
3247 Clarendon Road, Cleveland Heights.
Great.
And I'm a frequent patron of the library, thank you. I enjoy it very much. The Lee Road, and also a longtime commercial real estate broker and a property owner. Commercial real estate property owner. So, I appreciate the opportunity to provide public input tonight. And I, I don't have any direct affiliation with any of the organizations at the Peace Campus, although I certainly am familiar with a number of them and, and attend some of their events. I just wanted to express my support for the facility remaining a hub of artistic and, and service nonprofits that serve the city of Cleveland Heights and our entire region. The arts organizations act as a magnet for community involvement, and they enhance our living experience and act to attract and retain residents in Cleveland Heights. The library took a leadership initiative in rescuing this community asset from the school board, and that action, I certainly applaud. But now, especially because of the pandemic, a little more time is needed to put together a workable plan that allows tenants to assume more responsibility, both fiscally and for the physical facility. So, I implore you to please allow that extra time and consideration to provide for the outcome that'll benefit the entire community. I know personally that faced as a landlord in today's environment, we've, we've needed to talk to many of our tenants, almost all of them, and made many accommodations to them, basically in order to keep them in business during this time, because otherwise, not only would they be in trouble, and many of them out of business, but we would be in trouble as landlords without them in our properties. So, it's, it's a tough time for everybody, and, you know, we gotta do the best we can. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Ferris, appreciate your comments. Well, obviously, we're talking about these issues a lot, we'll talk about your comments also the next time we get together. But thank you for, for showing up and talking.
If I can be a resource, let me know, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Cheryl, is there another speaker you'd like to introduce?
Yeah, it looks like Ari Klein.
Okay.
Mr. Klein?
Hello, is, is there someone waiting to speak?
Sorry, Klein.
Hi, Mr. Klein.
Hi.
You have the floor for five minutes.
Oh, thank you, I don't need five minutes.
Okay.
Um, Library Board Members and Director Levin, my name is Ari Klein. I'm a teacher and resident in Cleveland Heights, and serve as Vice President of the Cleveland Heights Teachers Union. Thank you for taking my comments. Timing is everything, the lease for the Coventry tenants expires, the pandemic hits, the economy being unstable, and the library taking huge losses of revenue and having it drastically cut in programming. Timing is everything. When the Cleveland Heights Teachers Union signed the lease last year and moved into the Coventry Peace Campus building, we had no idea all of these events would coincide. But let me tell you that being part of the CPC community has been wonderful this last year. Working with like-minded organizations that help improve our community has been fantastic. With all that is happening this spring conspiring against all of us, I urge you to reconsider your position with regards to the Coventry Building and its tenants. We really will only get one chance in making this phenomenal community of nonprofits survive. To sit down with a neutral mediator and try to work out a fair deal that benefits everyone. Patience during this strange time is needed. I hope that you will work with us to make great things happen at Coventry. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Klein, appreciate your comments for sure, and we'll consider them after the meeting tonight, thank you.
We see who else is in the meeting. We have nine participants right now.
Yeah, that was Ari Klein.
Is there another speaker ready, Cheryl?
Yeah, sorry, I'm just trying to put Mr. Klein back in the waiting room and.
Go, I'll just leave.
Okay, yeah, it's just a little tricky that this, um. Okay, so now we have Rachel, I don't see Rachel's last name, so she can just introduce herself.
Hello, Rachel, are you there?
Rachel?
Looks like her audio is still connecting.
Yeah, just.
Dana is also waiting.
Dana?
Yeah.
Eve, can you tell, but, we don't see her name.
There she is.
Is this her?
No, well, yeah, for a while.
Oh, there it is.
That's Rachel. Okay, is your audio on, Rachel, could you introduce yourself to us? Hello, Rachel? Can you hear us?
She is.
There she is.
Hello, Rachel?
Rachel, can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
Yeah.
Can you, yeah, can you introduce yourself, tell us where you live, and the floor is yours.
Me? Okay. My name is Rachel Williams, I was born and raised in University Heights in Cleveland Heights and attended Heights High. I now live and reside in Akron, but I'm on the Board for Artful.
And what would you like to say?
I'm here in, just on behalf of Artful, and trying to understand, trying to understand exactly what our future holds, where we are in our negotiations, and truly trying to grasp how we're gonna move forward in the next three to six months even, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Sorry, I didn't realize you were all waiting on me, I apologize.
That's okay, anything else you'd like to say while we have you on the spot?
No, no, sir, I'm just gonna listen.
All right, thank, thank you, Ms. Williams, appreciate it.
Okay. Heidi? I'm gonna write you in, Heidi. Heidi?
Heidi?
Hi, Heidi.
Hi.
So, Heidi, could you introduce yourself to the group, please?
Sure, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that I was like doing that. My name is.
If you don't, if, if you don't want to make a statement, that's fine, we just assumed you were here because you wanted to make a statement.
Um.
You don't have to.
I, I did have a couple questions regarding the Coventry Peace Campus.
Well, this, what we're, what we're providing here is an opportunity for you to make statements of things you think we should know about as we work through this issue. Is there something that you'd like to say about this?
No, no, nothing in particular, I'm just kind of, kind of joining, joining the conversation.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you for being here, appreciate it. Cheryl?
Yeah, that's Jim, no, that's Jim.
Okay, so now we've got. Dana?
Yeah.
Okay, here's Dana Bremer Fisher. What do you have, Dana?
Okay, Deanna, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Deanna?
Yes.
Would you like to make a statement?
I would.
All right, floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, I'm Deanna Bremer Fisher, Executive Director of Future Heights and Board President of Coventry Peace Campus. When the library authorized the purchase of the Coventry Peace Campus on February 5th, 2018, Library Director Nancy Levin stated the library's goals. The library wanted the tenants to become independent, it wanted to act as an incubator, supporting the tenants until they can take over ownership and management of the property themselves. Any money the library spends on the property will be reimbursed from rent money in a reserve that the tenants will maintain as part of the rental agreement. The library wished to uphold the spirit of the property's original deed from 1917, stating that the land is for public and educational use. The library stated that it looked forward to working with us to protect and preserve this community asset. At that time, Nancy Levin was quoted in a Freshwater, Cleveland article, saying that the library will most likely use some of the space on the Peace Campus for its own programming. And as recently as May 25th, 2020, Library spokesperson Cheryl Banks said, "We continue to work toward a day when the Board of Coventry Peace Campus can execute a lease with us, but we realize it may have to be postponed due to the new financial pressures on the tenants." What happened to that vision? Today, instead of partnership with the library, the tenants face possible eviction based on numbers the library will not share, and a hostile interpretation of the lease agreement that no one ever intended. Perhaps we need to remind ourselves about how we got here. When the school district closed Coventry Elementary School in 2006, community members formed a committee to study the future of the property. The idea for an arts and culture hub proved popular with the community, and the school board began recruiting tenants. In 2011, Ensemble Theater was one of the first to enter the building, followed by Family Connections, Lake Erie, Inc., and then Future Heights and Reaching Heights in 2014. When Artful joined in 2017, there was a renewed sense of energy. They creatively reused the mezzanine level and created artist studios that are accessible to people with physical disabilities. About eight months ago, Robin Van Leer moved in, bringing another round of new energy to the project. If you don't know Robin, she is a Cleveland Arts Prize winner, co-founder of Parade the Circle, and a Cleveland Heights resident. Over the past two years, the Coventry Peace Campus Board conducted a feasibility study, held several fundraisers, and made some improvements to the building. And we have been looking forward to sitting down with the library to begin discussions about a long-term land lease. But that day never came. First COVID-19 hit, and we had to focus on keeping our organizations alive. Then we received your letter of intent with terms that just aren't feasible. The LOI demands that we pay all costs of the building, then it asked for $25,000 in cash and $2,000 per month as payment for the reserve, a far cry from the current lease terms. For the record, there is $17,000 in the reserve. The biggest obstacle, however, is the $100,000 figure stated in your press release, the amount necessary to make the library whole. We don't know where the figure comes from, and our request to see more than spreadsheets have been rebuffed. More to the point, however, when we agreed two years ago to reimburse the library for capital improvements, it was over the course of a long-term lease, not one year. If that was the library's position at the time, it should have made it part of the agreement then, not two years later, and certainly not during a pandemic that as large as shut down the tenants. Despite that setback, the tenants continued to pay rent. Since 2018, we've paid more than $300,000 in rent and other fees. This more than covers the operating costs, and now we're threatened with eviction. Even if we wanted to meet these demands, we couldn't. We can't raise money to improve a building that we might have to vacate in a year. In 2021, we'll still be subject to your whim on whether or not you think we have fulfilled enough of your demands to enable us to negotiate a 25-year lease, which according to our advisors is not equivalent to ownership. So you will still be the owner, and you will have received an asset for $1 that you could still choose to tear down, or sell, or do anything you choose with. How is this good stewardship of the public trust? How does it make more sense to tear down the building at a cost of at least $500,000? We need to sit down with an objective third party and look at these costs and revenues to determine exactly what the number is, and the governing document needs to be the lease as we sign with the library. Arts have been shown to drive economic development and attract new residents to a community. Before COVID-19, we were looking at a 25% vacancy rate in the Coventry Village Business District. Post-pandemic, especially if we drive the arts away, I'm not sure what the future for Coventry is going to look like. Many people point to the example of the Gordon Square Arts District and say, why can't we have that on the east side? This was a project that took several years to accomplish, and it required public-private partnership and patience and perseverance.
Then I have 30 seconds left to step away.
Thank you. The nonprofits themselves couldn't have made it happen on their own. This type of project is not easy, but it brings big benefits to the community that invests in it. Cleveland Heights can do it, but we need to stay the course. We can be home to the arts, not only in name, but in reality, but we need to be working together. On its website, the library's stated values include responsible stewardship, so this board must really think about the potential costs to the community of its actions. It also states that the library values supporting community aspirations, cultivating and supporting programs that encourage safe and economically thriving neighborhoods. The Coventry Peace Campus project aligns with your values. Why would you walk away now? What's the harm in allowing us to continue as before? The easiest and most efficient decision would be to extend our current lease terms while we work together towards a long-term lease agreement. But for now, we are simply asking for you to please sit down with us and work with us to find a reasonable solution, one that will benefit not just us, but our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, next.
Okay, hold on one moment. All right. Next we have.
We have a person. Robin Van Leer.
Okay, next is Robin Van Leer. Abby?
Not seeing her yet.
Speaking to the list of children.
Can you hear us? Here.
Hello?
Can you hear us, Ms. Van Leer?
Yes, yes, I can, I can hear you now.
Could you introduce yourself and tell us where you live for the record?
Sure. Robin Van Leer, I live at 2991 Essex Road in Cleveland Heights.
Okay, well, thanks for coming.
Sure.
The floor is yours.
Oh, my, sorry, sorry. My name is Robin Van Leer. I moved to Cleveland Heights 31 years ago. Since then, I started the Department of Community Arts at the Cleveland Museum of Art, where I was also the creator and director of Parade the Circle, the Modernary Chalk Festival, the Winter Lights Lantern Festival, and the Community Festivals Program, which brings giant puppets, costume dancers, steel pan music, and onsite art activities to residents of greater Cleveland and beyond to Columbus, Erie, Pennsylvania, and Detroit, Michigan. At present, I am the newest resident of the Coventry Peace Campus. Last October, I was part of a panel exploring the possibilities available through collaborative community buildings, which host occupancy opportunities for a variety of community-based nonprofits. Nancy Levin and Sam Lepides approached me at the end of the discussion. Nancy asked if I might be interested in placing art installations near the Coventry Peace Arch. I was excited to have this interest from the library because I had just visited the former Coventry School, considering the possibility of renting a studio space there. While I knew the building from holding Parade the Circle outreach workshops there, and more recently when my granddaughters participated in Lake Erie summer camps, this was the first time I had been in many parts of the building. Immediately, I fell in love with one section which formerly housed Urban Oak School. In November 1st, I began the laborious process of outfitting a studio and moving all of my tools, supplies, costumes, and giant puppets into my space. By the end of February, and after spending several thousand dollars in moving expenses and materials, not including the monthly rent, I was ready to open my studio to the public. Although it was, it was a long and expensive move-in process, I wasn't concerned because of the upcoming long-term lease agreement that was to begin in July. I knew I had found my home, and the money and time was well worth the opportunity to be at the heart of a vibrant cultural arts community hub. At the end of January, I participated in Artful's Open Studios Night. In early February, I invited artists from all over greater Cleveland to visit my space and talk about my goals. In late February, I put out information on my new ArtX Facebook page about drawing sessions and family workshops. Two days after the first drawing workshop, Governor Dewine put the state on lockdown. In less than two months, every work contract I had signed had been canceled. I had to tell the dozens of artists that I hire, I would have no work for them in the foreseeable future. Still, during this time, I have continued to pay my rent and plan for a future when I can bring artists and community together to celebrate the creative spirit. While all of this is beyond unfortunate, it does give us an opportunity to take a breath and consider the fabulous possibilities for CPC, the place it can be, a magnet for community and the arts in Cleveland Heights. It offers a chance to renew the school building and make the necessary repairs before we are back to full tilt. It gives us a chance to work together side by side, the library and the tenants of CPC, and see how we can support each other going forward. I don't know what brought about the library's change of heart, but I know that if I have to move right now, it could be the end of ArtX Limited. After 31 years serving the greater Cleveland community, I had looked forward to focusing on my, my art and my energies on my own neighborhood. I am committed to doing everything I can to create the beginning of this potential reality and not the end. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, Ms. Down there, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next we have Shannon Morris. She goes. Shannon?
It's still connecting to audio, you just give it a minute.
Can you see them?
You guys have a better view than we have, I think.
Hello?
Hi.
Read a statement from some of our artists.
Could you first introduce yourself and tell us where you live?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Shannon Morris, I'm the Executive Director of Artful. And this is a statement from one of our, our first artists to move into the building, you know. They were the first in line, so they're very concerned about this. And their names are Mandam. Six months ago, the Coventry Building was full. We shared it with children who came together to play and learn with beautiful artistry of theater, with communal gatherings of artists, and with thriving workspaces. The Peace Campus was a community success, and then came the pandemic. Today, you're thinking about closing the Peace Campus, that your organization and our community fought to save. This might seem like a good choice, I know, because it stands empty and silent, but that is not because the space is unneeded. It is because our community is resisting a pandemic. We are facing not only our own mortality, but also the greater threat of a loss of community. You look at it now and see a building everyone has abandoned. I look at the same emptiness and see a symbol of love and goodness of our people that we have not prioritized selfish desires over the welfare of one another. But now you, members of the board, ask to tear down our communal spaces even before the plague ends. Where will the theater go? If it dies, it will not be the virus that killed it, but your lack of perseverance in dark times. Surely, the spirit of art and theater will survive somewhere else, but farther away. When, and when does it, when we can reopen and tell the stories of what happened and how we can keep our community strong. People of the library, don't make your decision for the imagined bottom line of today's crisis. Make your decision for the stories the future will tell. Thank you.
Great, thanks for your statement, Ms. Morris, we appreciate it truly.
Okay, next. Next is Catherine Butler. Hold on one moment, let me. Catherine. Okay, there we go. She'll be with us in a minute.
Okay.
There she is, she's connecting. There she is. Catherine? Catherine? There she is.
Does she want to make a statement?
I think she's still coming in.
It also says connecting to audio.
Yeah.
There we go.
Ms. Butler, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Would you like to make a statement to the Library Board?
Yes, I would, let me find it on my screen here.
If you could just identify yourself and tell us where you live, for the record.
Okay, I'm Catherine Butler, I live in the Coventry neighborhood. And my son went to Coventry Elementary School. Do you need anything more than that?
That's fine.
Okay.
The floor is yours, you have five minutes.
Okay, okay. Uh-oh, where did it go? Ah, okay. The news that you're considering evicting all the tenants from the former Coventry School building and demolishing it is completely shocking and appalling to me. This wonderful community resource was building a foothold and starting to develop a positive presence before the pandemic hit. The potential for positive impact through the Artful Studios for Artists, classes for the community, Ensemble Theater, and housing two longtime community organizations in proximity to each other was just beginning to flourish. I do not understand the logic behind this move. Especially during this time of shutdown and economics uncertainty, the threat of eviction in September is akin to kicking a dog while it is making an effort to stand up. Artists make a huge commitment when choosing a studio space, as a studio is not only difficult to move, but moving completely disrupts the work the artist is doing. Cleveland Heights prides itself on its commitment to the arts and to community. From what I have read, the tenants have made an effort to pay into the fund for maintaining the building. From what I have read, the tenants have made an effort to pay into the fund for maintaining the building. However, the amount required by the library seems to be a moving target. I have seen three or four different figures. The cost of demolishing the building and reclaiming the land will certainly be enormous, and I have seen estimates of $400,000 to $500,000 for that purpose. Costs of maintaining the building, though hefty, are not as costly, and the gains to the community for keeping the site as it is are great. The campus has done its way to becoming a jewel of Cleveland Heights, and I want the artists and art organizations currently located on the Peace Campus to remain in my community. I live in the neighborhood, and my son went to Coventry School. I was PTA president when we had artist Anna Arnold as an artist in residence working with students to paint the mural on the wall by the lower level of the playground. I'm invested in our community, and I think that anchoring the Coventry Library and Coventry Village with a vibrant arts and community center has a profound positive effect on Cleveland Heights overall. And I urge you to work in partnership with the tenants of the Coventry Peace Campus to find a way to keep the campus as a home to the arts community and to keep enriching Cleveland Heights in the future. Thank you."
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Ms. Butler, really. We'll take them into consideration the next time we meet. Thank you.
Okay, next. Next, I'm assuming this is Suzanne DeCicano. Let's see Suzanne's iPad. Suzanne should be joining us in a second here. There she is.
Hi.
Hi.
I can hear you.
Great. The floor is yours.
Okay. So, hi, everyone. I'm reading from text because it's easier for me to express myself that way, and I hope it doesn't take away from the earnestness of my message. And so I'm speaking today on behalf of the Coventry Peace Campus because, you know, I know all the circumstances that are going on right now. And I want to say that the community holds in the highest regard all the entities. The library is... There's probably not a more beloved institution in Cleveland Heights, and I think libraries fulfill that role everywhere they're at. But during, you know, when it's not pandemic times, I always just marvel at the range of programming the library does. So, and likewise, the organizations at the Peace Campus have become integral parts of the community and have proven again and again their extraordinary value. I'm gonna probably say things that you already know. Future Heights Leadership and its role as our community development corporation has been vitally essential in Cleveland Heights. Their programs and advocacy bond us and make a real difference in the fortunes of the commercial districts. Lake Erie Inc. is located on the campus, but they're programming citywide, and I'm always amazed at their creativity and resourcefulness in fulfilling their mission. And although they're local, they really have a nationwide reputation. Artful has contributed not only studio space for area artists, but also been a partner for Coventry merchant events and public art visioning. We all know what Value Ensemble brings to the campus and Family Connections, Reach in Heights, all the other tenants. I just feel great pride that they're part of us and they're part of our district here. The campus means a great deal to the business district, and I can't emphasize that enough. Their presence and activities have added a vital energy to our street. Coventry Peace has been extremely supportive ally as we try to navigate not only post-COVID, but the downturn before the pandemic. So I just think that the integration of the library and the arts campus and the business district is unique, exciting, and visionary. And I think we all need to work really hard to morally and financially support the vision because I think it's really what Cleveland Heights is all about. That's my statement.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. You echo what some people have said already, so we're hearing a lot of the same things, and we agree. So, thank you.
Okay. Next is... It looks like Debbie Presser. Oh, it's Steve Presser.
That's not Debbie. Steve, are you there?
Perhaps we can take somebody who is ready and then maybe come back.
Dana said she got kicked out and is in the waiting room.
Okay, hold on. There, Steve.
Hello there.
There's Steve Presser.
Hello there. Who said hi? I can't see.
Hey, it's Jim Russo. The floor is yours, Steve, if you'd like to make a statement.
Oh, okay. Is this the first statements, or have there been some previously? Because I just got on physically. I'm just curious.
We have about ten so far.
Okay. I'm a little late to this event here, so to speak, in many ways. And I just recently found out kind of what's been going on and have done a little bit of research, but not enough to really delve into what's going on to both sides. But my big, big concern is that we have a pretty unique situation on Coventry to have a historic library that's always been a part of the community. We have a school which my father-in-law and my kids went to and I thought was converted into a really wonderful use. And then we have a commercial district, and we also have a pandemic. And so this is a very unusual time on all fronts. My big, big concern is that the library has always been really just progressive and proactive in the community, has done wonderful things with the Coventry Village community, both residential and commercial, of which I live now residentially, did have commercial there. And I don't know enough to point fingers, which is not a good thing to do anyways, but I do know that we have creative forces on both sides of the fence, so to speak. And my big, big concern is that, and again, with little bit information I have now, is the potential in the future of seeing a building which is being really creatively used for both arts and also for a community of nonprofits potentially could be going down. And, you know, again, economics is a very play here. But I just don't know enough to say it should be this way or that way. I do know enough that the corner of the Coventry Village is crucial to the commercial district. And as we all know, when commercial districts go in a southerly direction, it definitely has a deleterious effect on the surrounding residential area. And I'm not being selfish to say I live two blocks from there. I'm being more selfish for what's happening directly in the commercial district and then, of course, what's happening to Cleveland Heights at large. And so I would love to hear a response in the future. I guess nothing's happening tonight, but I'd love to find out how we got to this impasse and what we can do collectively and creatively to make use of what is a wonderful potential facility for a lot of nonprofits and a lot of artists who have really dedicated a lot of time to it. And like I said, I've been a friend of the library, and I've been a friend of many of the artists in the community, people involved in the building. And just finding out about this a couple of days ago concerns me. And so I'm here to say that I'd like to find out what we can do to resolve, resolve is the correct word, or what we can do to move forward that would benefit all parties, both the library and the inhabitants of the building. Because what's really important is that we create a viable entity at that end of the district that will kind of move positive direction into the commercial district and then, of course, the residential area. So this may have been repeated. This is the first time I'm on here, so I don't know what previous people have said, but I just know that Coventry is a really special place, and the library has been a wonderful participant over the years with the Coventry District, the CID, and I would love to see that continue in a really positive fashion. So, peace.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate your comments. Cheryl?
Next, we have Pamela Bertod. And...
Okay. Let's see. Still getting the sound going, I think, right?
It takes folks sometimes a little while.
Pete? Can you hear us?
Hey, Ray.
Hi, it's Ray Gonzalez. My alias is Pamela Bertod.
Hey, Ray.
Hi, I'm just logging in here as... Okay, my name is Ray Gonzalez. I live at 3014... Can you hear me?
Yeah, we're listening.
Okay. Yeah, my name is... I'm at... Okay.
I think he's got Facebook on. He's listening to himself.
We can hear you, Ray. Just keep going, please.
Yeah, we got you.
Yes.
Facebook, possibly?
I live at 3014 Berkshire Road. And I was one of the volunteers helped to build the Coventry Peace Park. Both my boys went to Coventry Elementary. I've been involved for close to thirty years now in the Peace Park. My kids went to library. I've been a volunteer with the Coventry Peace Campus. My concern is to make sure both that we have the building continue and the park continue and to have a thoughtful interaction with the library, the board, and the Coventry Peace Campus nonprofits. I'm also very concerned of what would happen if the building was to be demolished at the cost of $400,000 to $500,000, how that would impact both the commercial district and the Peace Park and the library. There are dominoes that can come into place here of one building going down affecting a lot of others. I also want to know, what are the plans for this? Do you have a long-range strategic plan if you're going to do the eviction of the nonprofits? And how is this going to impact the operation of the building and operation of the Peace Park and the future plans for hopefully doing fundraising to continue the peace work? Thank you very much for your time. As Steve Presser says, I really hope we can forward and to resolve this in a thoughtful way for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ray. Appreciate your comments. We'll take them into consideration.
Okay. Next, we have Jennifer Wintner. Hold on, let me get her. Jennifer? All right. There she is. I think we have video for her. Jennifer?
Okay, give her a minute. Just... Till the sound goes on. Jennifer, are you there?
Can we see if anybody else is in line?
Yeah, let me... Susan P. Susan? Oh, Jennifer? Okay, we got you.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Wintner at 2733 Scarborough Road. I'm a longtime resident of Cleveland Heights and have been a devoted user and supporter of the Heights Libraries. Like many in the community, I was thrilled with the library boards acquiring the Coventry School and Peace Park. I believe statements from Nancy Levin and board members that they shared an understanding of the value of having a community arts center as well as the park and that they were committed to preserving both. It now appears that the library valued only the opportunity to gain more parking. I feel betrayed. The library, an institution I valued and respected, is irrationally turning its back on a vital element of our community. Thousands of people benefit annually from the programs and services that the Coventry tenants provide. Having them clustered in one building which is so close to the library creates a vibrant extended campus that intensifies a sense of community. What will the library gain, other than more space for parking, by evicting the tenants and demolishing the building? While the cultural and programmatic argument to work with CPC and the individual tenants are strong enough to stand on their own, I'm willing to focus on the dollars and cents. According to public reports, the library is making $2 million in cuts to offset reductions in state funding due to COVID-19. How can the board justify diverting close to $1.5 million from essential library needs to demolition of the Coventry building? Again, what other than more space for parking would the library gain from demolition? The CPC Board has made substantial progress in assessing the physical needs of the Coventry building and identifying sources of the approximately $200,000 to make critical improvements. As a professional in the field of nonprofit real estate development, I can assure you that lining up funding sources is a long and difficult process. However, if the board has a spare $400,000 to $500,000 to use on demolition, I suggest it use about $200,000 of that amount to repair the critical problems in the building. By taking title to the Coventry Building, the library board became a steward of that community asset. Threats to evict the tenants and demolish the structure indicate not just abdication of that role, but disdain for it. I appeal to the board to revert to its tone of community spirit that it showed when it agreed to take title to Coventry property. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wintner. We'll take your comments into consideration.
Susan P. Is... We've got a Susan P. Susan?
I'm unmuting. I don't know why there's no picture of me. I'm enchanting, I swear. I'm Susan Prendergast. I'm one of the people that thought up Artful and contributed all of my teeny tiny money to to keeping it alive. And it's not just keeping Artful alive. It's keeping Cleveland Heights alive. We are nothing. We abandon our cultural icons, nothing. I'm the gal... I'm crippled, and I'm the gal that comes around the library and the studios on a blazing red mobility scooter with an orange puff of feathers for my seeability flag. I'm old, I'm crippled, and I'm sick, but I continue to go to my studio. I continue to take part and pay my little money to join the other nonprofits that are in that building. I can't believe that Cleveland Heights, or any of its entities, would desert Coventry this way. I'm one of the people that invented Coventry. It was a long time ago. It would be the end of things. It would be the end. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Prendergast. Appreciate your making comments today.
Okay, now we have Jeremy.
Ms. Down Cleve, can you hear us?
Yes.
Would you like to make a statement to the board?
Sure. Yes.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. I love my library. I remember hearing Nancy Levin give a report to the Cleveland Heights City Council in which she said that the library's purpose was to facilitate democracy. And it's wonderful how, no matter your age, your background, or your interests, whether you're a toddler or a senior, a knitter, a ukulele player, or a... whether you're a toddler or a senior, a knitter, a ukulele player, or a world traveler, a reader, a listener, or a viewer, the library has what you need. I've been impressed to see how during this unprecedented period of isolation and risk, the library is still there for us all. How the dedication and ingenuity of its staff have enabled it to keep serving our community. It has been painful to hear of the drastic budget cuts necessitated by the loss of state funding, particularly the furloughs of staff and reductions in pay for those who remain. I also love the Coventry Peace Campus. I was disappointed when Coventry School, the hub of this very special neighborhood, closed. It was a source of renewed hope when a community of organizations dedicated to the arts and education grew organically in the school's former space. When the existence of that community was threatened, I, along with many others, was grateful to see the library step in as part. Now, all of the organizations involved, smaller and larger, including the library, are struggling, cutting back, trying to contrive ways to continue serving their constituencies. In this climate of scarcity and pressure, somehow, the library stance has changed. Instead of working collaboratively with Coventry Peace to find the best possible solution for everyone involved, the library has resorted to threats and ultimatums. I can't begin to tell you how disappointed I am at this breakdown in communication between the library and Coventry Peace. I'm disappointed and also perplexed. Perhaps its responsibilities as a landlord are creating financial and other pressures for the library. But after cutting the budget by over $800,000, can the library afford the $400,000 it will take to demolish this building, plus the cost of restoring the site? Is it worth displacing the groups now in residence there and disbanding a vital creative community only to have the building sit empty for some indeterminate period of time? Has the situation gone beyond the point of no return? Or is there a way for the groups involved to come together and to listen to each other and work constructively? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
Okay, now Jeremy.
Well, I am the husband of Nancy Winkelman. And she is one of the artists in Artful. And she's here right next to me, but I guess she wants me to speak. So I do not have a prepared statement. But I did read the mission statement of Cleveland Heights today, and my thought would be that if your decision is to evict the tenants and demolish the building, I think you really have a responsibility to change the mission statement of Cleveland Heights because it includes some lovely sentiments about progressive values and valuing the arts and valuing community. And those are very easy kinds of things that everybody likes to say. But if you really evict the tenants and devastate and demolish the building, putting an end to a beautiful jewel that has evolved in your community over the years, you just need to change the mission statement so that it reflects the actions of Cleveland Heights instead of the rhetoric. This is so, I grew up in Cleveland Heights. We live in Shaker Heights now. I grew up in Cleveland Heights. In trying to explain to friends what sounds like something from like stories of Ebenezer Scrooge before he repented and changed, it's very hard for people to believe that this is happening in Cleveland Heights. I will tell you that if you do this, it will change the identity and the public image of Cleveland Heights in a really profound way. Nobody is able to even fully reconstruct the thinking that would conclude that, let's spend $400,000 to evict arts organizations, educational organizations, a theater, nonprofit organizations. I can't, I don't know whether there's, whether the real story of what's going on here is not being discussed. That's a possibility that would occur to me because the story that's out here doesn't really make very much sense. This is a morality play about a collaborative of people that are seeking to advance the human spirit in Cleveland Heights. And they're up against sort of an Ebenezer Scrooge, which turning everything upside down. Someone was incarnated in the library board. It just, it's, I don't know how you're going to explain this either to the people who live in Cleveland Heights or to people in the surrounding communities. It sounds like the opposite of Cleveland Heights. There has to be some way to work out a better solution than spending $400,000 to evict arts organizations and demolish a building to have more parking places and more grass. I really earnestly hope that this story can have a happy ending in which somehow, in the bottom of the ninth inning, the home team wins.
Thank you for your comments. Really appreciate it. Thank you. We'll consider your comments.
And we've got Susan P. We haven't had her, didn't we? Did we have Susan P. already?
The blue screen?
Okay, I'm sorry. Jeremy Shapiro.
That's Jeremy.
Got it. We just heard from him.
I'm sorry. R. Dobby? Okay, R. Dobby? Sorry about that.
Okay, a lot of people keep talking.
R. Dobby? I'm sorry. R. Dobby? R. Dobby?
Not coming up on our screens.
Okay. The last one I see is just a phone number. There's no name.
If there are no other people waiting in the queue to speak live, we had some comments that came in in writing. And I believe you are going to read several of those so that we can make sure that those people are heard on the record.
But Jim, I think we got one more, though. The person on the phone call is in the room.
Oh, they're in the room. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it was just a number, so we didn't have a name.
Maybe not anymore.
Down to 10. Okay. Yeah, I'm just gonna go to my office to read those so I can take my mask off. So just give me a moment.
Thanks.
I will triple check to make sure we don't, I don't believe we have anybody else, but I will double check.
Okay. Kim, do you have me?
We can hear you. We do not see you yet.
Oh, right. I think I turned my video off. Okay.
There we go.
Okay, so I have I have a few statements. The first is from Susan Miller. Libraries are essential. We, the citizens of Cleveland Heights and University Heights, pay tax to subsidize this essential service. While I applaud the library's efforts to assist the private businesses that have rented space in the property, when tenants of a lease agree, when the tenants of a lease agreement are not met, consequences follow. The needs of the tenants are a hard place, and the need for libraries a rock. In the time of a global pandemic, we must prioritize and face the music that plays today, like it or not. Virtual activities for some, other spaces for others. Vacancies abound. If the service is essential, relocating outside the boundaries of our city will not erode the services provided. Open Doors Academy is a case in point. If in hard times we, the people, cannot subsidize a business, this is a sad state. But here we are between a rock and a hard place. I stand with the library now, as I did when they saved the property from another potential privatization. And that was Susan Miller from Cleveland Heights. Okay. The next one is from, and if she's listening, I apologize if I don't pronounce her name correctly. It looks like Ariana McCall, Cleveland Heights resident. And a lot of these did not come with addresses and neighborhoods necessarily. She says, "I'm reaching out today after being notified that there are plans to evict tenants and tear down the building. Let me start by saying this is a terrible idea and will have a detrimental impact on the arts community in Cleveland Heights. As an individual who grew up in the Heights, that area is one that many youth have been drawn to. It is one of the few areas in the neighborhood that support the creative community. Over the years, Coventry has slowly lost some of the most notable businesses that make that area the scene that it is." By tearing down, she says, "the library," I think she means by tearing down, I'm gonna assume she means the old Coventry School building. Not only not only are you continuing to further hinder the community, but you are putting artists in an even more complicated situation/position. We are in the midst of a pandemic, and the arts are one source that offer an ability to cope with everything that is going on in this world. I have no questions that I am currently interested in asking, but I am giving a hard no and taking the stance that this building should not be demolished. Not only will it impact the lives of the artists that are housed within this building, but will also have a detrimental impact on the small art scene that is currently in Cleveland Heights."
Cheryl, before you go to the next one, I want to let everybody know there is a person in the waiting room.
Okay.
Should I let him in? Okay, all right. I'll do that right now.
Then I'll just wait.
This is Carlo Wolf. Carlo, can you hear us?
Not yet. So it's still connected. Yeah.
Carlo, can you hear us now? Cheryl, why don't you go ahead and read another one, and then we'll see if Carlo joins us.
Okay. Okay. This one is from Barry Weinstein. "I'm writing in support of getting the maximum value you can out of old Coventry School building. That value isn't the kind that hides in your wallet, in your pocket, or on your smartphone, linking you to your bank. It is the value of an imagination of creating, of letting others know that you are there, that you care, of enriching lives. I lived on Euclid Heights Boulevard and went to Coventry Elementary School. My mind is filled with tapestries of memories of going to Mitchell's Candy Store and Mrs. Mitchell putting an extra piece of chocolate in my bag. Tommy's was new and had not moved into his present location yet, as he was within a root beer milkshake throw of the current library. Just like now, going in there wasn't just getting a quidly sandwich or a falafel. It was seeing friends and escaping for just a little while into a world where you could relax and get away from it all. Even the library was my recluse. Seeing that reverent building sitting so nobly on top of the hill, I would cross the street and spend hours there, having my mind take me to places I never knew existed at the time. Today especially, we are being forced to argue lives against dollars and actually speak of deaths as acceptable loss, and are reminded of each time we turn on the internet, open a paper, or turn on the television. How did we get here? You may think that that is a different world, so far away from the mundane happenings of a local land use issue. But the question can still be asked, what do you want your world to be? How do you want it to look? Please don't make caring for your community and raising the human spirit a casualty again. Keep the building."
All right, we might... Carlo, can you hear us? Carlo?
Just realized I'm really close to my video.
Carlo?
Yes.
Did you want to make a comment?
No, I'm okay. I'm just here to listen.
Okay, we're good with you. We're gonna take you out of the waiting room.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, Cheryl, any more?
Yeah, three more, three more very short ones. One from Amy Cronauer. "It is a bad idea to dismantle the nonprofit collective at Coventry's Peace Campus and even consider evicting them, but it is an especially bad idea to do so with short notice in the context of a COVID-19 pandemic. What value or benefits do you think these organizations provide our community? What is your current plan, and what is perceived as more important? What do you think will become of these organizations and their benefiting community members if you do not help them with their long-term plan?" Okay. And we have Loot Quintrell. "Question one, with your announcement of plans to demolish the Coventry School building, how does this affect your support of the arts and culture community in Cleveland Heights and University Heights? Second question, if you demolish the school building, what will happen to the park and other green space that is a vibrant part of the Coventry community? Question three, how will the eviction of current tenants and demolition of the Coventry School building help CHUH Library's ability to get increased financial support?" And then, I think we already heard from Mr. Shapiro.
Yes.
And Ms. Winkelman's husband spoke for her.
Yes, thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Anybody in the waiting room?
No, no. Oh, my gosh, somebody just appeared. All right, one more. One more. This person's name is Neil. No last name is given. That's not his last name. Neil, can you hear us?
Hi, this is Neil Martin.
Hi, Mr. Martin. You have the floor.
Great, thank you.
Neil, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
You've got Facebook up. There's a delay, so why don't you shut Facebook so that you can speak to us live?
I can hear you. I'm hoping you can hear me.
Please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Neil Martin. I run NJM Ceramic Art Studios as a part of Artful in the building. And two years ago, I put in a major amount of money in building a ceramic studio in that building, thinking that my dreams had come true, and I finally have a studio of my own, and I have people that are coming in there and making art. And we've started to have classes for people, and it's been a wonderful dream come true for me. This idea that the building should be torn down to put up a parking lot, just, it's just abhorrent to me, not only because I've got a huge investment of money, including a number of things that the library asked me to do that cost me thousands of dollars to do in order to have the ceramic studio there, and then to be blindsided by this idea that for some minor amount of money and some problems that are not being properly discussed, the entire thing's going to be torn down and a parking lot put up. And that just doesn't make any sense to me at all. It's a major disappointment. It's a major financial burden on me. It's terrible for the people who have joined me there, who have spaces, who have just, you know, their lives have been deeply impacted by the ability to do art in Cleveland Heights. And to hear that you're just gonna turn around and evict the tenants of this building in order to tear it down, the very thing that the entire community came out against just two years ago. It was a different reason for tearing down the building, but the entire community came together and said, no, we don't want this building torn down. Yes, we want the arts in Cleveland Heights. And it's just unfathomable to me that that things have gotten so bad so quickly that it doesn't seem like people are even talking about the alternatives here and coming to a resolution that we can all be happy with and understanding all of the moving pieces of this thing. So I am just, I'm flabbergasted, I'm confused, I'm I'm with the other people that were saying this whole thing just does not make sense. Like, there's a whole part of this that just isn't being discussed for some reason, that there are reasons why somebody wants this building torn down and the reasons that are being given don't make sense to any of us as far as I could tell from all the other comments. So, boy, this is just crazy and I would love to get in a public meeting with all of the people involved and work this out and I don't understand why that's not what's on the table right now. Thank you very much. Please do not destroy my dream. Please do not destroy my livelihood. Please do not destroy my building. Please do not destroy all of my artist friends who rely on this building to do what they do to serve the community of Cleveland Heights. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We'll consider your comments seriously.
We have no more participants in the waiting room.
Okay, can we move on to the rest of the agenda at this point?
Sure. I'll go through the financial report.
Yes.
The report wants to look at page two with our financial bank statements. The short-term investment pool that we have a lot of money in from the State Treasurer's Office continues to go downward. The interest rate for the month of June was 0.55. You'd have to go back to mid-2016 to have interest that low. If you look on page four, the monthly comparison for the month of June and year-to-date, our revenue for the month of June alone from this year to last year is down $32,000. Our year-to-date from 6/30 of 19 to 20, we're down $44,000. We also have our expenditures down for the month of June from this year to last year by $120,000 between cutting supplies, purchase services, materials. Our cuts are there. The salaries and benefits don't reflect the whole amount that we've cut in salaries because we had a payroll on June 3rd, which still reflected calamity pay, which everyone got full salary in the month of May. So we had one payroll in June that was full salaries and only one pay that reflects all the furlough and people on Shared Work Ohio. So in the month, the salaries and benefits for July will be down significant compared to that. If you look at page five with the pro-rata amount for the year that fortunately was 50% of the year done, we have received 55% of what we've estimated and we've spent 41% of what our budget is. So we've been ringing in our belts there. Does anyone have any other questions specifically on the financial statements? If not, I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve.
Motion to accept the financial report.
A second?
Second.
No further comments? I just feel like, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, same thing? Thank you. We'll go on to the revised agenda, the director's report, talking about the IFF report.
Can I ask a quick question, just because our transition was really abrupt from all the public comments? Could somebody make a brief statement to people still watching on Facebook because I've gotten this question about what happens next? Like, what we discuss or any, you know, group discussion, just so people know kind of where we stand moving forward.
Yes, traditionally, we discuss whatever comments were made at the next committee meeting, which is the first week of August, first Monday, first Monday of August.
August 3rd.
And then we will either write or we will respond to everyone who spoke. Because there are so many, I think we'll put out one direct letter to the people who addressed us. And I'm sure there'll be more things to vote on for the library board and consequences of our discussions will come out as actions that we will take.
Okay, thank you.
We'll discuss this in committee.
Yeah, no, I knew how it worked, I just know people out there.
So that is how we do it.
Yeah, that's helpful, thanks Patty.
Thank you, thank you Patty. As the library director, before I talk about the financials, I do want to thank all the people who have commented. More than two years ago, we got involved in this organization with the tenants with all optimism and hope and full of the idea that this was gonna work out. And I think a lot of things have been said that are not true. We will issue a statement in the future that will address some of these untrues. But immediately, I would like to say there are no plans to build a parking lot. That is ridiculous. Why would we? There's a big garage next door, there's a parking lot. We don't need a parking lot. And I think part of our comments were taken out of context because what we were saying was that we also value the green space in the park and that improvements could be made there that would benefit the entire community. And while we do love our artists and our nonprofits, we serve the entire community and we are trying to keep our vision on what is best for the entire community and not pick winners and losers. So let me just move on to my report. At our July Board meeting, I'm sharing the reports from the IFF, which is a financial organization out of Illinois that does work in Ohio and other states supporting nonprofits and arts and often in the realm of real estate. They are considered experts in their field and they were hired by the tenants and the library with, for the sum of $21,000, which was paid for by a fifth third foundation grant and also a grant from the Cleveland Foundation. We were very optimistic when they were hired and we all participated in the process. We filled out reports, we supplied documents and bills, we walked through the building, we had our staff meet with the representatives of IFF and then they also met with the tenants for quite a long period of time. In November, the tenants received a financial report from the IFF that had five different models demonstrating the need to raise more revenue from lease rates, finding new tenants for the family connections that are in Oak spaces, as well as creating revenue from the former daycare spaces. IFF recommended a property manager and/or a site director. The financial report from the IFF that had five different models demonstrating the need to raise more revenue. Somebody has their Facebook feed. Somebody has their Facebook feed and it's coming back to speed that.
It's Cheryl's, it's Cheryl's computer.
Okay, you figured it out. Two roles that the library has been forming in a somewhat limited capacity are site manager and property manager. We have given quite a lot of time over the last two years, most of it mine. A lot of it was from Debbie Herman and from Tim Hasbrink, our facilities manager, as well as Maggie Kenny, our grant writer. The report from IFF informed the tenants that additional expenses, such as property insurance, building maintenance, and utilities, calculated on a square foot basis, would be needed to maintain the building. IFF states that with current lease rates, the project would have a deficit of $151,000 in year one of any new tenancy. The report states that in another model, a break-even model, it would demonstrate a lease rate closer to $9.50 a square foot to cover the basic facility operating expenses. And if they increased the lease rate for some of the new tenants but kept their rates low, even if the new tenants were paying $1,250 a square foot and they were paying $4.50 a square foot, and even if they did not hire a site manager, they would still be in the red following the first year. In addition, the tenants have based a lot of their pro forma on the possibility of renting out the bottom level space, which used to be the Coventry daycare. However, the kitchen has been totally demolished, there is no kitchen there. The floor is full of holes and the bathroom is for little tiny children and the toilet's faced the wrong way. So all of us would have to be remedied before it could be rented out. The increased lease rate model does not sustain any debt service to the library and even would require some fundraising to enable them to do capital improvements. IFF anticipates a capital investment budget over five years of almost $1.1 million. Admittedly, this would be in a dream world, assuming that they could raise that kind of money. At the very least, let me skip here, the most important capital expense that is looming would be repaired to the HVAC system for the entire building, which is limping along and a full replacement would cost $110,000. But we have received an estimate of $50,000 to replace a number of compressors. The HVAC is more of a concern than a roof, which can be repaired or replaced in sections, deferring the cost to different times down the road. IFF details improvements that would solely benefit Ensemble Theater and should not be borne by the rest of the tenants, although they have not shown any ability to do those repairs as well. We are aware that the tenants have applied for a number of grants for their combined organization, but they have not been successful in creating operating support for the building. IFF, while capable of providing loans, has chosen not to support this project. So, why should we? Conclusion is, on a recent phone call with Robin Toh, the Director of Real Estate Solutions for IFF, she shared her assessment of the CPC project. She said, "It's a simple equation. You must bring in more revenue than operating expenses. The tenants have three ways to do this. Number one, rent. Number two, external grants. And number three, foundation grants, which usually requires a grant or I don't know, full-time." In the original lease agreements with the tenants from June 2018, we always anticipated and stated that repayment of all costs incurred by the library was necessary. The letter of intent sent to the tenant on June 2nd requires additional revenue and one governing entity. It was rejected. So it's not just about money, it's about the capacity to be the governing entity of the building. Letter of intent, number two, which we bore the expense and did all the work on, also requires additional revenue and one governing entity. In addition, it requires a debt payment of $25,000 to start the process of repaying their debt that is around right now $85,000, but we believe that by the end of their tenancy in September or December, it will be $100,000. The tenants have not shown the capability to provide the necessary revenue to pay for their continued occupation of the building. We provided them two years of favorable terms to create a successful operation. They paid for experts to assess the situation and then wholly rejected their advice. They had the benefit of all library support. What is next? We need to move on. We are happy to have the park and the parking lot for use of all people in an area that sorely needs free parking and green space. It has been remarkable witnessing the use of the parks since the pandemic made indoor activities dangerous. Thousands of people have used the park. The library must deal with COVID-19-related budget cuts as well as its own community strategic interest. We interrupted our master planning in March when the state was placed on a stay-at-home order. We will work on replacing the playground at Coventry Peace and enhancing the park for use by all. We will complete the renovation of our Coventry Library Branch, needed now more than ever for social distancing and air handling. No library branch was bursting at the seams, especially with families when the shutdown was ordered. They too need better HVAC system as well as meeting rooms. A lot of the tenants spoke about democracy and I think that democracy also means using the assets of the community for the betterment of all. I believe that the tenants have been given many, many opportunities and we were their second chance. We have tried very, very hard to help them be successful, but on a number of occasions, they have rejected good advice.
Thanks Nancy. Okay, next agenda item.
Approval of a dance return. I'll read the resolution. Debbie, which page is that? Page 37. Thank you. From the end of Ms. Levin's statement to page 37 are the documents we received back at the beginning of the year from IFF for the board's review. The return of advance resolution, whereas in February of 2018, the Cleveland Heights University Heights Library approved purchasing the former Coventry School at 2843 Washington Boulevard and needed to pay utility bills prior to receiving revenue from the tenants. Whereas at the March 19th, 2018, regular meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights Library Board Trustees, a resolution was approved advancing $50,000 from the general fund, the 299 Washington Boulevard Fund. Now therefore being resolved, the Cleveland Heights University Heights Board of Library Trustees approves the return of the advance to the general fund done in two payments. The first was in November 18th, November 18th of 2019, and the second one was done on June 20th, 2020. Motion.
Remind us why we're doing the return?
Because this was money we advanced to pay bills prior to getting the rent. And as we were looking at widening down on the leases and making the tenants independent, that was money that we committed to taking back after it was advanced to them.
Okay. Thank you, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further questions or discussion? Ms. Carlyle?
You know, I think I do have a question. So if we return the money to the general fund, does that essentially stop the discussion that we started tonight? I just.
No, no, this was just like cash flow purposes to, you know, it's keeping it cleaner because now all the money in the 299 Washington Boulevard Fund is solely from the tenants, whereas in the last two years, there was $50,000 from the library that was in there. Now it has been removed and the fund just reflects the tenant's rent.
So just so I understand, maybe this makes the bookkeeping cleaner? Because the $50,000 that was essentially in advance is getting removed and so everything.
Correct, yeah. Per state law, when you advance a fund of money, typically, you might do it if you're requesting a grant and you need to make a financial commitment prior to receiving all the grants. Last year, we had a grant that it wasn't until all the money was spent that they would give us a reimbursement of the money that was spent. So this is kind of the same thing that we put cash in there to help get them started as rent was coming in and now we're gonna take the money back because there is rent coming in.
Okay.
The other thing I'd like to share, Patty, speaking to your email earlier today, the tenants receive quarterly financial reports and they also are able to see the monthly accounting that's been in the Washington Boulevard report every month since we started our relationship with them. And I think having that $50,000 out of there makes it cleaner for them to see exactly where they are.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Carlyle, on the roll call?
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Fowellin?
Yes.
Mr. Gurbach?
Yes.
Zee Womoto?
Yes.
Mr. Rusa?
Yes.
Mr. Trakia?
Yes.
Motion approved. The next resolution.
The next resolution is to amend the 2020 appropriations and looking, and I won't read this one, but in looking at the bills that have been coming in, as you're all painfully aware, it's been a very hot June and July. And typically, the highest bills for the operation of the Coventry School building are the electric bills in June, July, and August. As a matter of fact, we just paid a seven thousand dollar electric bill last week for the building. So what we've done is looked at, based on water, sewer, gas, the electric bills, I'm coming up with to go through at least September thirtieth. I need to increase the budget by twenty-seven thousand nine sixty-five. I believe if the tenants that are in there that have been paying rent, continue to pay rent, we'll have enough cash from the tenants to pay those bills through September thirtieth. So I'm recommending an increase in the budget of twenty-seven thousand nine sixty-five. Any questions on that? Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Fowellin?
Yes.
Mr. Gurbach?
Yes.
Izzy Wamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Rusa?
Yes.
Mr. Trakia?
Yes.
Our next resolution is to approve a change order for the automated booksorder. Ms. Levin has sent several memos, I believe, to the board detailing how as the hole was cut in the wall for the installation of the booksorder, we learned that that was a load-bearing wall for the second floor and we believe it was even one of the original outside walls of the building. And once that was discovered, we had to go put in a steel lintel above it, which required getting engineering drawings and a permit from the city, with some more electrical wires and that. We do have estimates on the electrical and the construction, and we're awaiting bills from the engineer and that. But we do not believe it'll exceed more than twenty thousand dollars. So we wrote the resolutions for the board to approve an additional expense for the project out of the building and repair fund not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. And right now, we're on the calendar to have the sorter installed in September because that was the first opening they had. Once we had to cancel the July install, once we discovered we needed to do this additional work. Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll, Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Fowellin?
Yes.
Mr. Gurbach?
Yes.
Ms. Izzy Wamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Rusa?
Yes.
Mr. Trakia?
Yes.
The next item is an authorization to purchase bipolar ionization units for the HVAC system at Lee Road, which includes the HIC building and the UH branch. Nancy, do you want to talk a little bit about what this will do?
Basically, it is the best state-of-the-art thing that we can do that would help us keep our air cleaner in the presence of allergens and viruses, including COVID-19 and flu viruses. And it ionizes the air, which makes any molecule heavier and makes it drop to the ground. And therefore, it won't go through the HVAC system. It's not based, it doesn't happen where the air is in the intake for the air conditioners. It's in the actual air handling system, so all air will be conditioned in this way. And unfortunately, we don't have this kind of air handler at Coventry or Noble, so we are going to look for other solutions for them. But UH and Lee Road and the HIC side all get different versions of this ionization system.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, oh. And I will second.
Okay, I'll give it to you. No further discussion? Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Fowellin?
Yes.
Mr. Gurbach?
Yes.
Izzy Wamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Rusa?
Yes.
Mr. Trakia?
Yes.
Thank you. Could you please explain the difference between the building and repair fund and our general fund?
The general fund is the fund where all of our tax revenue for property taxes comes in and also the public library fund. It is the all-encompassing fund that we pay salaries and benefits and everything out of for operations. The law does allow us to create other funds and segregate money for specific purposes. And the two main, nine general fund funds we have are Building and Repair Fund and a Technology Fund. They're outlined in our bylaws that those funds, at the end of each year typically, we transfer some of the money from general fund into those two funds to do capital improvements, the Building and Repair Fund and technology for the computers, servers, and the like. So that all is money that is from property tax revenues and essentially the public library fund. But once that money goes into the Building and Repair Fund, it legally cannot be spent on salaries or, you know, a magazine subscription or anything by law, the Ohio State Auditor's Charter of Accounts. It has to be for building and repair improvements, and the other one has to be for technology improvements.
And the tenant's money is in a separate...
Right. The tenant's money is in what's called a special revenue fund. So all of the rent, what we call shared amenities, they give us a separate amount for their internet telephone connections. And then there is some reserve that has been paid by tenants that is kept separately. And then all of the, you know, when I get all the electric bills for all the buildings, I get a separate bill for the Coventry School building for electric, water, sewer, gas. And all of those expenses are also segregated as a basic principle of fund accounting that that money has a specific purpose and it's segregated for both the revenue and expenditure side. Thank you. The last item under operations is a resolution to close all library buildings on Saturday, September fifth. As you know, right now, our hours are currently Tuesday through Saturday. We are closed on Monday. And per policy, all employees are entitled to have Labor Day as a paid holiday. So we're making a recommendation that we designate Saturday, September fifth as the Labor Day holiday for the staff that are not working on Monday. So they will get a three-day weekend in addition to the staff that are not here on Monday. Any questions on that? Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Carlyle? Okay, roll call, Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Crenshaw?
Yes.
Ms. Fowellin?
Yes.
Mr. Gurbach?
Yes.
Izzy Wamoto?
Yes.
Mr. Rusa?
Yes.
Mr. Trakia?
Yes.
The personnel report is embedded in the director's report. We do have some other reports, the Friends Report. Nancy, we just got a shout-out, and we share, do you have the report from the Friends to advise the board? Shelly, you're on mute. I can read it. Go ahead. All right, Nancy's got a... Kitty Fenneran sent a report today to us with her Friends update.
The Friends of Heights Libraries miss our libraries being fully open and especially miss seeing and interacting with so much of the staff. In the last month, a small group of volunteers had access to the Friends sorting room and have been working away and sorting and boxing a large quantity of books that have been donated to us by the library, as they call their collections. We have donated books through the monthly food pantry at Lee Road Branch and have made donations through the First Baptist Church, the Children's Book Bank, and many little free libraries. Going forward, we plan to work at finding other ways to donate books to those who need it in our communities. Any ideas are welcome. Our storage areas are full, and we recently turned down a donation of ten thousand books from the Shaker Library because of space. Because we have received many inquiries about donations from the community, we know that once we are able to accept them, we will be inundated. In the meantime, we would much rather get books into the hands of those who could use them. The Friends have an eBay store open for business and have sold a few items each month. You can visit them at www.ebay.com/str/friendsheightslibraries. The Friends continue to be available for whatever support they can offer Heights Libraries during this time. And it's signed Kitty Fenneran.
Mr. Rusa, do you have a president's report?
Nothing that I'm going to talk about to extend this already long meeting, longer than it is.
All right, director's report, Ms. Levin.
I'll go quick.
Thanks.
We have offered lobby service in our branches since June fifth, at Lee Road and the other branches since June twelfth, with steadily growing circulation. Many customers are interested in more services in the building, including computer access and browsing. Since the cases in Kiahawkey County have been spiking, we have delayed offering any new services, and we will continue to do so until this current spike is retreating. We do want to, we have a staff report. We have seventy-six employees that have reduced their hours by fifty percent, included in the Sharework Ohio Plan. Forty employees are on full furlough. Twenty-six employees have active, are active with full-time or part-time status. Seventeen are full-time and nine are part-time. And one employee is on the leave that is offered because of COVID. So we are now down from one hundred and nine FTEs to fifty FTEs. If it becomes possible for us to offer more services, we'll try to get some of those employees back as soon as possible. But right now, we're maintaining where we are and probably will do so for another month. Let me keep going. Maggie Kenny has drafted a white paper for the Coventry Peace Park, and we are looking into grants to enhance the green space and replace the playground. We have met with the Dome Brook Foundation and got some expert advice from them and also are looking into donations or grants from the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District and the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Also, because librarians don't stop, we are involved in a One Community Reads program for the fall that will bring Jason Reynolds, Brendan Keely, Said Jones, Brian Stevenson of Just Mercy, and Eberon Kendi to the Cleveland area through Zoom and virtual events. These programs are going to be shared by online libraries in Kiahawkey County. And our library is working on a couple of local author experiences that we will be sharing as well. I'm really excited about this, and it definitely supports our sixteen nineteen project, which will continue into the near future as far as I know, right? Okay. We ourselves are doing diversity and equity focus groups, and we are sending out information to the community so that they may participate. These will be in a virtual format, and I will be happy to share what the state's focus groups are with anyone who's interested. I won't go through the long list. And in our government report, we are happy to report that Governor DeRyde signed an executive order that will have us get a reimbursement of money paid for our Sharework Ohio unemployment participation. So we should be getting about, is it thirty-three thousand?
A month.
A month back from the state when they actually get that going. And we are very, very grateful for that money. That really helps us a lot with our salary budget. And finally, the open meetings rules that were relaxed during COVID continue to allow us to meet by Zoom. All right, if no one has any questions for Nancy, I'll also try to be very brief with the June 2020 Public Service Report. It's attached to the packet, so you can all take a look. Obviously, it's much thinner than you're used to as we really had to curtail all in-person programming and really resort to online programming exclusively. So we're still doing, our youth services staff are transitioning from Facebook Storytimes to Zoom Storytimes that allows parents and children to participate more than just watching something on Facebook. So we'll be transitioning, they started doing that in the month of June. We'll really see that in July. I also have a rather lengthy report from TIE about what the circulation statistics for all of our branches through the month of June. You can take a look at that, and I'll talk a little bit more about circulation as a whole in just a few minutes. We've also just reported on the activities of staff as they continue to try to reach the public virtually and also via phone reference. Most of our staff can't see customers. Really, the only staff members who are doing so are circulation staff here at Lee Road, and then at the branches, they can see customers a little bit more. But it still is a new world that we're all getting used to. Customers are getting used to calling in for things, and you'll see from the circulation statistic breakdown that we did experience a noticeable jump in physical materials going out again since we reopened our locations in early June. So you can all take a look at the Public Service Report. If you have any questions, you can ask me now. You can email me or ask me later. But just in the interest of time, I will go through everything. I will go point out that at the conclusion of the Youth Services Report, there is a table with information about the summer reading program. As you probably remember, the summer reading program is our biggest program every single year. And through the month of June, we had, we're using an online service called Beanstack. It's something we subscribe to in order to do an online summer reading for both children's, actually not both, all, children's, teen, and adults. We've got five hundred and seventy-three youth services or youth registrations so far. And we do have, I'm going to look at checks reports, that we've had eighty-four people, eighty-four adults during the month of June register. So that's good to know. People are still interested in participating and want to do summer reading, even though they can't come in and do prizes and submit book reviews and things that they've traditionally been able to do. So I'll move on to the circulation breakdown and then the circulation statistics. On page fifty-three of the packet, you'll see the percentage of our circulation in June. The physical materials made up seventy, over seventy-three percent of our circulation. So we are seeing that bounce back now that we reopened. Overdrive alone was almost twenty-two percent, so those numbers continue to be very, very strong. And then, as far as percentage-wise, our non-as-popular services, Kubla, RV Digital, Canopy, they still had strong months, but their percentages were lower just because we reopened. On the next page, on page fifty-four, we see the circulation by library. So obviously, we had over-doubled the circulation that we did during the month of May. So when we reopened, people were very, very interested. Obviously, our numbers don't quite compare to what June was of last year, but there were some strong numbers, certainly the strongest we've seen in the last three months. Are there any questions about circulation statistics? Okay, I'll move on, then my last comment is about the visitors. So after having nobody in our buildings in April and May, we did see some visitor numbers to report during the month of June. Obviously, those are a lot less. Even though if somebody is coming in just for a few minutes to pick up their materials or use the copy machine, they're still registered as a visitor, but we don't see the numbers that we had before. We do have customers still taking advantage of curbside, and we can offer that to them at all four of our branches. But I think it's going to be slow. Sometimes people are just very hesitant to come back in the building, even though the staff are all wearing face masks and we're requiring that in the public. But at least we do have people starting to come back in. And then, because we don't have meeting rooms, we have no meeting room revenue. So Debbie, Debbie has updated that spreadsheet, but...
However, we will have some numbers in the next few months that we have opened the meeting rooms to the Census Bureau. They will come in starting at the end of, I think... They will come in starting at the end, I think July thirty-first is their first day, and then they have another four. And then today I had a conversation with a trainer at the Cuyahoga County Board of Elections, and we, I think there's one CPL building, Rocky River, in our library, are the only ones that have offered to open up for their training. So some of the training that the Board of Elections would be doing at, say, Orange or South Euclid or East Cleveland, they're going to come here. And they're, they even asked me, could they come in like four days a week, and they're looking at UH. So we will start having some people come in to count, but that's not going to be a revenue generator. But those are two very important functions we certainly support here. So we'll have census training and Board of Election workers training. And they asked me to say to anyone that I came across, if I knew that they would be interested in working the Board of Elections, they're very much looking for people. I think they said the average age of their poll workers is sixty-three. So they think it's going to be very difficult in November if they can't get more people in there because many of people in that age group aren't, you know, ready to commit to even being in a training room with fifteen people, let alone working at the polls. So we will have some people in our meeting rooms starting next month.
Are there any questions about the Public Service Report or any statistics before I put my mask back on?
Thank you, Kim.
Okay, thank you.
I did have just a comment from the audience. This comment is for Annette, and they say that your daughter is so darn cute.
I agree. I was sitting here thinking the same thing. Oh, my goodness.
I have to share a little anecdote that I did with Annette that I was looking back at one of our meetings to check what people were saying when we were working on our letter for social unrest. And I didn't have Annette noted as saying anything, and when I was looking at the video, she popped up, and I'm like, that's strange. I don't have Annette in my notes. And when I rolled back to it and put up the volume, Annette had the baggy over her shoulder, and I distinctly heard her burp. Your microphone's good and she's loud.
Hi, sweetie.
Do we have any unfinished business from the board members?
Debbie, I did notice something under adjourned. Adjourned, it says the next regular meeting, it states August third, two thousand nineteen. Right. And of course, that's two thousand twenty.
Oops, thank you, Kim.
I did not notice that earlier, and I would have told you.
At this point in time, the last couple of years, we've done committee meetings for like a half hour and then went into a board meeting because it's typically a slower period of time. Nancy and I will keep in touch with you if we feel there is a need to have any resolutions approved by the board in August. But well, it'll definitely be a committee meeting, and then depending upon if there's official action needed, we'll consider it to be a board meeting immediately thereafter.
And I have one last thing, and that is congratulate Kim for receiving her CPLA, which is a Certified Public Library Administrator Certificate. She's worked on it for four years, and four years is a long time, so thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much. The library is very, very supportive and let me work on it during work time. But for the record, I, we agreed I would do it on work time, but I did pay my own tuition for that. So it was a good compromise.
It was a win-win.
It was a win-win, and I think I brought a lot of things back and shared them with Nancy, Debbie, Tim, as I learned different, different things during my coursework. So thank you, Nancy. I kind of forgot.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Well, same sign. Motion's approved.
Thanks, everybody, for hanging in there for a very long meeting. I really appreciate everybody listening to all that. I think it's really important, and I'm hoping that our real estate committee of the board can meet fairly shortly. Nancy?
Yes.
The next, you know, few days.
We are still awaiting any response from the tenants on our...
I understand. Yeah, I understand. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody, good night.